Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting of the Dudley Charlton Regional School Committee. It is Wednesday, May eighth. It is 2024 at 6:30 PM. We're at Charlton Middle School. Everyone can please get up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin the night by taking a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Looking at the consent agenda items, is there any items that the committee wishes to pull out of the consent agenda? No? Okay. I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda items as listed.
So move.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Motion carries. Great. Moving on to communications, does any members have communications for us? No? Okay. We'll move on to student representative report, Ms. Sophia Poplaski. And I believe this could be your last meeting, so congratulations.
I was laughing as a joke. I didn't mean to.
No, no, it's not congratulations for us, it's celebrating your graduation.
Thank you. So, a couple, I think it was two weeks ago, our drama club just had its production of Clue. I had the chance to see it on Saturday. And it was very fun, very interactive, all of the performers were awesome. We just had our first induction of our Spanish Honor Society at the high school. I did not know we were going to do that, but when I found that out, I was like, oh my goodness, this is awesome. Over on last Friday, we just had our district-wide art show, and we got to see so many exhibitions from all of our students, from all grades. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it, but I have seen pictures online. It was very, I was taken away because I know I can't, I can't do that. So the softball team just had their senior night on Monday, and they won sixteen to nothing, I believe. And it was great because we got to honor our four seniors that are also captains of the team, that are also graduating, and it was just very exciting. This week, our prom tickets are on sale, and they're on sale this week only. Also, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, so from me as a student and from all of my friends and my classmates, I think it's safe to say that we really appreciate all of our teachers and educators and our staff members in the school, and I don't think we can thank you enough. Also, on this week, MAMM media tickets are on sale for our music department. There should be a link on the district website or in the newsletter. And I think it's very important to support our arts in our school, if you want, guys want to check that out. And the last thing I have is that the NHS is holding a cornhole tournament on, I think it's May twenty-first. It's a Tuesday night at 6:00 PM, if you guys want to come out and support that, and, sorry, I'm like nervous today. But that concludes my report.
Thank you. And thank you for remembering to, I did not forget, I did not remember to say Teacher Appreciation Week, and it's so important. Thank you. And we're on to the superintendent's report.
Madam Chair of the School Committee, I do have a couple of things to report on. First, I want to publicly congratulate Ms. Jean Costello and Ms. Nicole Enberg in their successful Charlton reelection and return to the Dudley Charlton Regional School District School Committee. Your commitment to the committee and the district is acknowledged and appreciated. But while he is in the audience, I'd like to also thank Mr. Avi for running for our school committee and really investing in our district, and I appreciate that you have interest in being on the school committee here in Dudley Charlton, so I wanted to do that as well. As the upcoming town meetings in Charlton and Dudley draw near on May twentieth, 2024, it's crucial to continue acknowledging and appreciate the tireless efforts of our town leaders. Their dedication to balancing budgets and supporting the diverse needs of our communities, particularly our invaluable resource of school-aged children, deserves our gratitude. Town leaders work diligently behind the scenes, navigating complex financial landscapes and advocating for the well-being of all residents, including our youth, who represent the future of our towns. Their commitment to ensuring equitable access to resources, educational opportunities, and community services is truly commendable. As we approach the town meetings, again, May twentieth, both town meetings are on the same evening, let's take the opportunity to express our appreciation openly and sincerely. Whether through heartfelt words of thanks, gestures of support, or active participation in community initiatives, let's show our leaders and school committee members that their efforts do not go unnoticed. Please attend the town meetings and support your collective commitment to the establishment of thriving communities where residents and our students can flourish and reach their full potential. The next item I have is I am pleased to inform you that the position of Dudley Middle School Principal has been officially posted. As previously communicated, interim principal, Mr. Michael Tucker, is spearheading the search efforts in establishing a qualified search group. We are confident in Mr. Tucker's leadership and look forward to the appointment of the next Dudley Middle School Principal prior to the start of the summer vacation. That's our goal. Furthermore, I am excited to announce that our search for the next athletic director for Shepherd Hill Regional High School and the middle schools is well underway, including this evening. We've received a robust applicant pool for the position, and a dedicated search group has commenced the interview process. We anticipate announcing the appointment of the new athletic director in the coming weeks. As a reminder, the last day of school for the 2023-2024 school year is Thursday, June thirteenth, 2024. On this day, it is an early release day, early dismissal for all students. The next item I have is I am, it is my distinct privilege to announce this year's Dudley Charlton Regional School District Quo Vadis recipients for the 2024. Since the inception in nineteen sixty-one, Quo Vadis Club of Webster and Dudley has been instrumental in enriching our communities through its steadfast support for excellence in education. Our Quo Vadis Educator Award is a testament to the dedication and commitment of educators who consistently demonstrate excellence in their field. These individuals serve as shining examples, inspiring both their colleagues and students alike. This year, it is with great pleasure that we recognize two outstanding educators who have truly exemplified this spirit, Ms. Amanda Cottor from Heritage Elementary School and Ms. Dawn Davy from Dudley Elementary School. Both Ms. Cottor and Ms. Davy have been recognized by their peers as benchmarks and beacons within our educational community. Their unwavering passion and tireless dedication to teaching have left an indelible mark on the lives of their students and colleagues alike. In accordance with tradition, the Quo Vadis recipients will be formally recognized and honored during the class of 2024 graduation ceremony. It is a fitting tribute to their exemplary contributions to our district and an opportunity for us to express our sincere appreciation for their outstanding achievements. The next item I have, which Sophia already mentioned, was last Friday, May third, was our annual Arts Through the Ages at Shepherd Hill Regional High School. The parking lot was full and the artwork was on full display from one end of the cafeteria through the gymnasium at Shepherd Hill. This is always an incredible display of artwork from our students, and it is facilitated by our district art teachers. I recognize our DCRSD art teachers, Dawn Grauville, Deborah Griffin, Crystal Logan, Amy Parkett, Shane Shimke, Kathleen Small, and our art show co-advisors Lisa Hines and Stephanie Lashour for their support of exhibiting student work. Additionally, I recognize Shepherd Hill Regional High School twelfth-grade advanced art students who have a showcase table of their work. Alyssa Palermo, Ava Sousa, Ariana Hannah, Jethro Mensah, Savannah Sullivan Tufts, Olivia Lanchitis, Carly Rotar, Ellie Gruppozo, Madeline O'Hern, Devin Lugo, Emily Ruther, Seven Lavoy, Morgan Izvicky, Aggie White, Rachel Reynolds, Megan Dakari, Dakri, excuse me, Madison Bennett, and Amelia Aneskevich were our twelfth-grade advanced art students, and they should be recognized as well. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. And just a note, too, you had mentioned that the interviews for the athletic director are going on, and school committee member Zella is at those interviews, so couldn't be here tonight. So I just want to make sure that was noted. So thank you. So we'll move on to public comment. Does anyone have any public comment they'd like to share? Please come on up.
Good evening, Anthony Avi, Charlton, Mass. First, I wanted to congratulate all the students with the art show. As always, it never disappoints. All the effort from the teachers and the faculty, it was just amazing, but it's just a wonderful opportunity to see all the hard work from the students. Another thing, I have a statement and a question. And so, one, the statement is, in case some of the members or the people in the audience might not be aware of what the charge of a school council is by MGL, it makes recommendations to the principal for the development, implementation, assessment of curricula, accommodation plans required for pursuant section thirty-eight Q and a half. They assist in the review of the annual school budget and the formulation of a school improvement plan, and a number of other things, and they're required to assemble their first meeting within the first forty-five days of the school calendar year. I would also note, I went through the committee's agendas, and I stopped at twelve, but for the last twelve agendas, it said on future business at the anticipated meeting with the school councils, which hasn't happened yet. And the reason why I bring this about is, I think it's important that as a district, district-wide, we all row in the same direction congruently, and we collaborate to the same goals. And I think that's really hard if we, as school councils, there's a, you know, there's over six of us, are working so diligently on, with the efforts of the principals. We take the effort and the work that we've been charged with very seriously, as I'm sure you guys take your work seriously as well. So my point being, I think we should try to work together and perhaps convene a workshop if you guys feel that would be useful. And if not, then I don't believe it should be on the last twelve agendas or more. But I think we can work together, and the more voices, the coalition of voices we have, the better of a district we will be.
And can I ask you, what would be the topics of discussion for the workshop?
Well, I think we could start with strategic plan. I know that the committee themselves, the school committee, has a strategic plan for the district, and we should be making sure that we are all working towards the same goal. Now, obviously, there's going to be minutia of individualized strategic plans for each building, for each principal and stuff, but as a district, we should be collaborating in one direction. And I'm not sure we can attest that that is in fact happening or not happening, because we haven't actually had a meeting as a group.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Is there anyone else? No? Okay. We will move on to new business. A is the Dudley Charlton Leadership Council, President Vanessa Poplaski.
Madam Chair, I'd like to bring up President Vanessa Poplaski, Nicholas Demelios, who's the vice president, Lily Dirt, I spoke to her this afternoon, she couldn't make it, and then we have Treasurer Allison Castaneda Moreno, okay? So I'd like to invite them up to present. This is an annual presentation to the school committee of the work of the Dudley Charlton Leadership Council at Shepherd Hill.
Perfect.
Well, good evening. I just want to take the time to thank you all for having us today and giving us the opportunity to present the project that we've been working on for the past year. So, once again, I'm the President Vanessa Poplaski of the Dudley Charlton Leadership Council.
I'm Allison Castaneda Moreno, treasurer.
And I'm Nick Demelio, I'm the secretary.
So every year, the Dudley Charlton Leadership Council, we decide to take on a sort of project in order to implement within our school with any problems we see within our students, as it's a group composed of around twenty-three students amongst all grades at Shepherd Hill. And we really get to work closely with Superintendent Lamarche and be able to put in our student perspective within administration, and it's a really great opportunity, as it seems to be one of the only opportunities we have to be able to directly speak to administration. And it gives us a great opportunity to just talk and voice our opinions as students within Shepherd Hill. So some of our past projects we've done, at least with the time that I've been within the group, is we've implemented EpiPens within Shepherd Hill and all the other schools within the district, as well as we've created internship opportunities, so some of them including some students being able to go down to the elementary schools in order, if they're on the path, to become an early education major and want to become a teacher within the future, as well as we have some engineering internships as well. And we've also created a website that helps eighth graders transition into freshman year of high school and creates sort of a seamless transition from middle school to high school.
So this year, we kind of focus on one main project, and so Mr. Lamarche was approached by Arthur Emma, who is the CEO of a new startup company called ByDesign. And so, as I'm sure you know, at our school district currently, we use Google Classroom for most of our teaching and learning. But what ByDesign is kind of unique for is that it kind of combines not only school, but it also comes with your like personal life, you have a calendar where you can add habits, your day-to-day activities, you can also use like docs, it's kind of like Google Docs, but it's all in one space. It also combines all of your notifications, not just from Google Classroom, but also from like Remind or any other services that the school might use. And so, we were approached by him to kind of pilot the program and to see if this is something that we'd want to kind of take over for Google Classroom and kind of implement into the district. And so, our role in that was, like I said, piloting the program, and we met with Arthur Emma, actually, he came to our school maybe five times, and we actually got to work with him one-on-one and talk about, we gave him feedback on what we liked about ByDesign, what we thought was the pros and the cons. And from that, we were able to kind of meet together as a group altogether at the end of the year and talk about if we wanted to use this. And so although ByDesign was very, it was a great program, but we just felt that getting all the students in the school on board to use it and actually fully invest their time into it would be very difficult, especially if you look back, Google Classroom was able to get many students invested because of COVID, and without that, I don't know if many students would use it as much. So, we decided as a group, we took a vote. The ultimate decision was to not move forward and use ByDesign next year, but we do believe that this was a great opportunity, because Arthur Emma started this company by himself located in Cambridge. And so, kind of discussing with him, we got to learn a lot about programming, entrepreneurship, starting your own business, and it was a great connection to have, because I think he's someone that's very approachable, and we could definitely have a connection with him in the future. And so, although we didn't maybe move forward with it, it was definitely a great project for us this year.
So even though this was our main focus, this wasn't the only project we had this year, our students split up into different sections of things that they thought were important in our school, so we had other four things we were working on. We have a mental health project, bathroom reforms, lunch reform, and we have a website that we also want to add to, it's a DCLC website, and that website is just kind of to help students connect to the school easier. You can get like access to AP classes, AP classroom, it's just easier to connect. The main focus right now is the mental health in our school, so a lot of students are interested in that, and they're trying to find ways to implement plans in which students can communicate with teachers when it comes to their mental health. Same with our bathroom reforms, our bathrooms are not the best at Shepherd Hill right now, so our students are very interested in trying to find a way to make that better. One of the ideas for the lunch reform, a lot of students want to implement like free waters into our school and have more, what is it, like not plastic, we want to use like reusable stuff in our school, and we actually did implement that last year. We have switched from plastic floors to like metal stuff, so it's more helpful for the environment, yeah, environmentally friendly, sorry. And yeah, so those are our main focuses, and we're probably going to continue working on these projects next year. So yeah.
Yeah, so next year, although us three are seniors, Lily Dirt, the other officer is a junior, so she'll probably be here spearheading those projects, and although ByDesign took our main focus, I think that definitely those projects that Allison talked about are definitely going to be taken, yeah, the focus for next year. And we hope that it definitely has a great next year while we graduate.
Thank you. Once again, for having us tonight.
Hold on one second. Does anybody have any questions? Yes?
Thank you guys for doing this amazing work. I just, I'm always impressed with what our youth can do and what, like, I think we don't give you guys enough credit for the things that you're accomplishing, and it's amazing to see what you guys are going to do in the future. That's just a comment. My question is, the freshman transition website, is that up and running, or is that something you're still working on?
Yeah, so it's, that's, we started it about, I think, three years ago was the first time.
Yeah, I think it was our freshman year that we first, when we were first in the group, we first developed it.
It's been up and running. We update it regularly because, you know, teachers, classes, clubs change, but I think, is it linked to the DCRSD website?
It's linked to the DCRSD website.
It has like a virtual tour list of everything.
Yeah, it's a virtual tour of Shepherd Hill in order to help get the freshmen if they aren't able to get into the building for whatever reason.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Of course. Your student representative, actually, is also a part of our group as well, so she's part of everything.
Yes, go ahead.
Madam Chair of the School Committee, I just want to compliment our students here, including Sophia. This, as I've shared with you as a committee in the past, this is really one of the brightest parts of my work here in Dudley Charlton, is to work with the student group and have honest and open conversations, and I always open it up, they can bring up anything, it doesn't have to be, you know, the task that we're working on, it's really an opportunity for us to work together, and I really appreciate their leadership and always investing in some type of project overall, overarching project, but also looking at other things as well. Yes, the bathrooms are original, I think, original to nineteen seventy-two, so they do need to require some upgrading, we talked about that before. But they are, they're a great group, and I really appreciate what they, how they invest, because this is outside of their academic studies or their extracurricular, because they're all involved in extracurricular activities as well, and they really invest the right amount of time into DCLC.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to B, the appointment of Ms. Kelly True as the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning.
Madam Chair of the School Committee, is it okay if I invite Ms. True up to the table? Madam Chair of the School Committee, it is with great enthusiasm that I submit my recommendation for Ms. Kelly True to assume the permanent position of Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning within the Dudley Charlton Regional School District, pending final fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget approval, as well as final contract negotiations. Ms. Kelly True has exemplified exceptional leadership and dedication throughout her tenure within our district. Since assuming the role of principal of Dudley Elementary School in July twenty-twenty, perfect timing. She had twenty-twenty vision when she came here. She has admirably shouldered, excuse me, she has consistently demonstrated a profound commitment to excellence in education. Additionally, Ms. True has admirably shouldered additional responsibilities this school year, serving as the acting Assistant Superintendent for Continuous Improvement in Teaching and Learning. Ms. True's extensive experience in public education spans over two decades, beginning in two thousand, as a classroom teacher and subsequently progressing through various leadership roles, including classroom teacher reading specialist, curriculum leader, curriculum coordinator, and a district supervisor for English Language Arts. Her expertise has not only been recognized locally, but also nationally, where she has served as a sought-after educational consultant. References for Ms. True unanimously attest to her exceptional leadership qualities and her innate ability to navigate the intricacies of education with finesse. As a steadfast advocate for continuous improvement, Ms. True approaches her work with a keen understanding of the day-to-day challenges faced by educators. Her positive influence on wavering dedication and ability to foster a culture of collaboration and growth are truly commendable. Therefore, it is my strong recommendation that the school committee moves forward with a favorable vote to appoint Ms. Kelly True as the next Assistant Superintendent for the Dudley Charlton Regional School District. Her visionary leadership, extensive experience, and unwavering commitment to educational excellence in Dudley Charlton make her the ideal candidate to lead teaching and learning in our district. Respectfully, Superintendent.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Kelly True as the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning as of July first, pending contract negotiations. Is there any discussion? I will say I'm excited, and I look forward to what you can bring, and the work that needs to be done is a lot, and I appreciate that we have your vision to do that. Okay. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, we're going to move on to C, Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative. This is regarding their capital campaign, or capital fund. Executive Director Leva.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, thank you for giving me a little bit of time to come present our plan to hopefully establish a capital surplus fund for Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative. Hopefully, if you received the materials and had a chance to at least peek at some of those, because I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have about this. The Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative has been around for forty-nine years. We have a campus in Dudley and a campus in Southbridge. We serve students with varying degrees of special needs, and they come from not only the Dudley Charlton Regional School District, but also from fourteen other member school districts. On top of that, at any given year, we'll get students from non-member districts on the order of about eight to ten districts. Even in Connecticut, we'll send students our way. We are one of twenty-four collaboratives in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I got to know Southern Worcester County because the seven years before I became involved in working here, I was the Special Ed Administrator for Grafton Public Schools, which happens to be one of the fifteen-member districts. So I'm here today because in doing some research and taking some coursework of my own, I learned that there is a way for collaboratives to set aside monies for capital projects, capital needs. And in the forty-nine years that Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative has been around, no executive director has done this, to my knowledge. While we are allowed to set aside some monies if there are surplus years, those monies are really truly a rainy day fund, and they have been used in the past to overcome shortfalls in income, to pay wages and salaries. This is a little bit different, and unlike a school district or a local educational agency, we're not allowed to go to MSBA to get bonded or to procure loans if we wish to purchase a building or build a new site. Currently, for us, we lease the two properties, and have been leasing one of the properties for twenty years and another one for fifteen. Our relationship with our landlords are great, don't get me wrong here, but I'm always the guy looking from ten thousand feet up and a hundred yards out. If for some reason the landlords decide to sell those properties, we're lucky that our lease agreements do have a right of first refusal, but we don't own any real property, we don't have any capital funds in reserve. The onus would then come to the member districts in order to find a new location if we were ever displaced, or if we want to find a new location. I do have a bit of a long-term goal. I would love to see our students on one campus. As I mentioned, we are the small collaborative, we're the smallest of the twenty-four. Currently, we're just south of a hundred thirty students. I would love to see all of our students on one campus with some green space. If you've ever been out to either of our campuses, we don't have a lot of it. We also do not have any gymnasiums at either of the locations, so we do get very creative when the weather is inclement. Having a capital fund would give us that parachute, should we ever need it. It would also allow us to partner with our landlords, like we have most recently, by putting a playground with some of their donations at the Southbridge campus, which is our elementary school. For example, if we wanted to build a gymnasium, which has been discussed in the past prior to my tenure there, it would offset any costs that would potentially rise our rent and, as a result, potentially raise tuitions that our member districts pay for. So I'm looking at this as a way to grow the collaborative, set aside a parachute fund of sorts, and be ready for whatever we might want to do or need to do in the future. Now, one of the big questions that the six school committees I've already been to have asked is, are you asking us for money? No. The answer is absolutely no. It's a surplus fund. So, in those years- So in those years when we run a surplus based on our budget, we will be able to set those monies aside. Would I need to come back and ask you for that? No. What I would do is go to the Board of Directors, which is comprised of the 15 superintendents for those school districts, work with them to establish an amount each fiscal year that we had put into this fund and slowly grow it. We do something very similar with the insurance plan for our retirees, our OPEB fund, and that's been slowly inching up, we're getting closer and closer to funding that totally. And then the other option that we have is to return credits or tuition monies back to our districts, which we will be doing this year as well. So there's three ways to offset surpluses, and this one, I think, is critical for the growth and the stability of our collaborative.
So I entertain a motion to create a capital fund for the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative to be capped at $2 million.
Some more.
Second, I'm all right. Great, thank you. Okay, I'd open it up for discussion or questions? Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, so it's more of a comment. I've toured schools, I've toured both of them. I know exactly what you're talking about. If you haven't seen it, it's, there's a lot of good love in the place, there's a lot of good hearts, but the stuff is very small, da-da-da, breathing room, space.
Yes, that's a good way of putting it.
So, and it has some extra intensive around it that needs like a little bit more. So yeah, I would, it's something very much needed and it's nice to see SWEC look towards the future.
Thank you very much. To piggyback on that a little bit, to your comment, if that's okay, through the chair. The middle high school campus and our intensive needs program is located in Dudley. It's right on Route 131 and it's a old farmhouse. The elementary school is a renovated bowling alley. So that gives you an idea of kind of the infrastructure that we're working with.
It's got a lot of charm, but not a lot of, you know. Does anyone else have any other questions? No? Great. I do. All those in favor? Great, the motion carries.
Wonderful. Thank you very, very much. Seven for seven. Appreciate it. I do need a two-thirds majority, just to let you know. I think that was in the materials.
Do you need to do that?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Again, thank you very much, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Safe travels.
Thank you.
Rest you.
And we'll move on to the approval of the out-of-state overnight field trip to Washington, DC.
Madam Chair, in school committee, this came up at the last meeting and there were questions raised by school committee members and I have to really express my appreciation for Principal Monet. She took that feedback and she was very proactive with it and she moved on it. And so she did bring in a new application for the state overnight field trip. And instead of in October, now it is April. It's the weekend before the April vacation. So I support this and recommend the school committee take positive action on this, but Principal Monet is here if you do happen to have questions regarding it. But it was a very successful trip this past year and again, she took your feedback as a committee and she is bringing in new dates this year, for next year.
Great. I entertain a motion to approve the out-of-state overnight field trip to Washington, DC.
Some more. Second.
Okay. Does anybody have questions for Principal Monet? Principal Monet, would you like to come up?
I apologize. Congratulations, it was a dress of student day today, so.
We appreciate your school spirit. Where's your standing?
It was Pink Day at my school.
Okay, there, sorry. I did change my leggings. I'm looking embarrassed now. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
So this came out mostly in Dudley, not so much in Charlton, but the teachers, and I appreciate that you did change it, but I wanted to hear your thoughts about having it in April, right before MCAS. And so I think it was more of an issue in Dudley because there wasn't as many students that attended. So there was, I don't know the exact numbers, but maybe like half that went, half that didn't. And so, there was some material that was still taught while the other students were gone, but at the same time, the argument was, well, how would you like it if like you didn't send your child and they were going to school Monday through Friday and not being taught anything? So I just didn't know if you had any, I know you've done a lot of these trips and like the timing of it, and I wasn't sure if that's why you had tried to change it or...
So I had gone last year in my previous district in October and it was great because it's a kickoff, and I think I stated this at the beginning when I first presented, that it's just a relationship builder. I do recognize, it doesn't, like as a parent with my two kids going, four months is not enough time. So that was my big thing that I was like really hesitant when the lady came back that I've been dealing with for years and saying, you have to, you know, I'm giving you until August to pay for this trip. I'm like, this is the first time I've ever gone during cherry blossom season, never again. And I give them Dudley huge props that they loved it. It was too chaotic for me. There was too many kids, it made me super nervous, but they had way less kids. We had two buses, they had one bus. As far as them not going, I think it was the changeover and the leadership, the principal leaving. We hyped it up. Mr. Tucker and I have talked at length about hyping it up. He loved it. I have, I have no worries that there's going to be more kids going. I think those that came back. As far as what happened here, there was so much excitement building around it because I get excited about it, I think that's, you're going to see that in the other school as well. That's my feeling.
I just didn't know if your teachers felt, the ones that were here with the students here felt like they couldn't prep for MCAS because typically MCAS is...
Can I ask a question on that? The Dudley Middle School went in March, correct?
We all went together.
But it was before the English MCAS, right?
It was before all MCAS.
Okay. But I think you're at the point where you're in the middle of MCAS at that point? So it kind of gives enough time in either direction?
So they actually, to be fair, I pushed this back to the team leaders in eighth grade and they came up with the new dates. So they're 100% on board, because I was like, I need you guys to give me some dates that will work for you. Because I was worried about getting chaperones again. The same chaperones that already said to me, I'm not sure we can go in October and leave our families. So that was one. But all of my eighth grade teachers went, except for one on this trip, so.
And that might have been the difference.
Yes, huge difference.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, in school committee, for a point of clarity, this is only a request for Charlton Middle School, we don't have the Dudley Middle School yet.
I know. I just didn't know, you know, I only spoke...
Oh, you haven't approved Dudley, okay.
No.
It hasn't come forward yet.
I've only spoke to Dudley teachers and they kind of went with the flow this year, but they said if it was in the midst of MCAS, they weren't going to be happy again next year. So that's why I wanted to bring that up. And I know that it's a little bit later, but...
So they're actually, do you know their dates are in March?
All of eighth grade?
Just Dudley, we decided this year not to do it together.
No, no, no.
Yes, so Dudley's is March. No, they'll probably do it just before MCAS again, same timeframe as this past year.
But it hasn't been completed yet and therefore it hasn't been submitted to come to the school committee yet. I want to be clear about that.
Dudley's.
Dudley.
Yeah, yeah. I know this is just for Charlton, and I know that there was talk about separating...